Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Yountville Town Council meeting for Tuesday, March 19th, 2013. I welcome all of you here tonight, and if you are interested in following along with our agenda this evening, there are agendas on the wall just by the door as you came in. But we've gone relatively paperless here, so we'll be using the overhead projector and staring at our tablets throughout much of this. So I'm going to convene the regular session. We did meet in a special session to interview applicants for the vacancy on our zoning and design review board, and we'll be announcing the tabulation of those votes later in the agenda. But we'll start out with roll call, please.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Councilmember Muller?
Here.
Councilmember Doran Becker?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chilton?
Here.
Mayor Dunbar?
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next up, we are going to potentially adopt tonight's agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? And if not, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next up, public comment. I have a feeling we have some public comment here tonight. So this is a time to bring up an issue that's not on the agenda. So I will invite anyone that would like to speak on an item that's not on the agenda tonight to come forward at this time. If you could, please come to the podium and give your name and address, and feel free.
Hi there, all.
Welcome.
I'm Bruce Donsker in Landiway, and here to talk about Washington Park a little bit. First of all, a thank you, because this is getting a lot of attention, a lot of communications, a lot of questions get answered, and I'm glad to see there's some products, some creativity in this. What we wanted to talk about a little bit is to take a step back and understand the justification for claiming that there are sidewalks in the first place, because that's what's starting this whole thing off. I'm going to first, before I talk a little bit, John Johnson, who lives on Landiway, asked me to raise a few questions on his behalf. He's on the road today. And his, one of his questions was, we have an opinion from the lawyers and from the risk management team. Is it fair to ask that the town get outside second opinions, okay, on it? Because obviously, we're not agreeing with what the lawyers and the risk management team have, okay? And his position is, and this is something, John, we had talked about before, was we're finding ourselves in a position that we're going to have to go get those expertise if the town's not willing to, and we promised to wait on that, but we're getting to the point where we're thinking, maybe we can't wait any longer, okay? But we just wanted, so that's his comment, is that he feels that the town is forcing us into a position of having to get our own second opinion if the town's not willing to, okay?
And what I'll just explain also, for some folks that aren't very familiar with the process, we can't get into a dialogue about your information, but what I'll do is we'll take the questions if staff can answer them just factually, we can provide the answers, but otherwise, we'll have to take it all in. Just so everybody knows, we're not going to ignore the opinions that you're bringing forward tonight.
Understand that. What, it seems the basis is, and this is two-sided, so they can see it too, and I apologize for using paper, because I didn't go treeless, okay? The comment was, please note that staff has reviewed not only the easements, but also the actual field conditions and the use and play with our legal staff and risk management professionals, okay? So there's really two things there, the easements, and then something that we don't understand yet. Looking at the easements, and thank you for giving us a copy of it, it doesn't say you have to have, we have sidewalks, it doesn't say we have curbs, it doesn't say we have streets. Okay? It says of the type, that there are easements of the type of sidewalks, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So there's nothing in the easement document that we see, if this is the whole document, and I think it is, that says that we're obligated to have sidewalks. It just brings them up at that, if we do have sidewalks, then we have to have, you know, easements over them, okay? The second area in here, the conditions and the use and play, we don't know what that is, and we've asked a couple of times to get, can we get our hands on whatever it is the documents are that have put the lawyers and the risk management team in a position of saying that there are sidewalks, because whatever that document is, we do not have them yet, okay? So we'd appreciate that. Now what I would like to do is introduce Nancy Gifford, who's going to talk about this a little bit further.
Thank you. And it's always good to see a couple faces we don't normally get to see here, so welcome.
Thank you.
And now, we should have had you do this in descending order of height, because now I'm going to have to ask if you could bring that-
Because I'm kind of short. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Now, please forgive me, I'm nervous, so I might even have to take a sip of water here.
That's quite all right. Even, even our elected officials in Washington will sometimes have to take a sip of water when they're speaking.
Yes, I did see that the other day.
Don't you worry about it.
Hopefully, I won't do it as ungracefully as he did. Okay, Mr. Mayor and members of the council and town staff, my name is Nancy Gifford. I live at 12 Jasmine Street in Washington Park. First, let me say that I do appreciate the town's efforts to provide access where required and to protect the town's assets from litigation. While I have every confidence that in your integrity and intention, I am afraid that your assessment of the Washington Park situation may lead to a costly misapplication of the American with Disabilities Act access guidelines and the California Building Code requirements that could unintentionally trigger exactly the type of ADA litigation you are trying to avoid. I have consulted with a friend who happens to be a CASP-certified expert in the field of disability access. Actually, I've been a friend of his for 40 years, so we've known each other a long time. He also happens to be in a wheelchair, so he actually is disabled also, so he has a unique perspective, along with being an expert in his field. As an expert, he agrees that while this area may visually appear to be an elevated walking path, it is actually in practice and in planning a raised beveled asphalt shoulder for parking and proper drainage. The original Washington Park plans clearly designate the area as public parking easement. The only change was that the service, this type of service was altered from DG to asphalt and raised to provide drainage. According to my expert, this is not a triggering event and did not in any way change the designation or usage as PPE. And in a quick reference to what Bruce said, I think it is listed PUE, Public Utility Easement, but it doesn't require a sidewalk, and I think the plans own, the town's own plans mark it as if required or if necessary in the plans. Okay, anyway, so it doesn't change the usage from PEE, PPE, and it is still for parking, not a sidewalk, and a key factor here is it cannot be both. It cannot be both. Even the town's own definition of a sidewalk in its design and construction standards says a sidewalk is a surface area for pedestrian use dedicated for such use. And then the key word here being dedicated, as this area is clearly not dedicated to pedestrian use, per the 1991 and 2010 ADAG and California Building Code, Chapter 11B, there is no requirement to put a sidewalk where none currently exists. Although not required, my expert suggested if you were worried about any confusion, you could easily mitigate any problems by clearly labeling the area as parking only and by using signage or marking the surface area appropriately. Personally, I think this is a wonderful idea, and it might solve everybody's worries and However, also according to the expert, if the town does pursue its plans to put in a curb ramp, then it would be establishing the paved area as a path of travel that would have to meet all the ADAG and CA 11B requirements, which it currently does not. Most obvious of which is that you cannot block access with anything, a garbage can, a recycling bin, let alone a vehicle. There are also other issues having to do with the width and the slope of the surface, and many more, I'm sure, I'm not the expert he is. So, so please, I don't want the town to, well, wait a minute. There are, there are folks out there who clearly do understand this stuff, and they know what to look for, and they are not well-intentioned. They are professional ADA litigants who go out there and look to cause problems, okay? And I do feel that the town has a fiduciary responsibility to avoid a costly mistake and expensive litigation. I don't want the town to end up like Petaluma, who recently made changes to their historic downtown area, and they're now involved in costly, very costly redos and expensive litigation. So please, all I'm asking is that the Washington Park CP 2013 project be put on hold just until you can gather some more expert advice on this complicated, complex, and very nuanced subject. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And you are much more subtle about the water, I will say.
Thank you. I didn't go, ah.
Yeah, exactly. Anyone else? Or have your, your comments kind of been shared already? Is that what I'm getting? Okay. Which is certainly possible. No others? If you'd like, now, now would be a good time.
My name is Manuel Margado. Thank you very much for hearing us out with our issues tonight with the parking bays. I was just hearing and agreeing with, I have concerns that losing our parking bays would certainly change the unique neighborhood that we have, and I'd certainly like to exhaust all our options before we move forward on something that we may regret later. Thank you.
Thanks very much for coming tonight. Anyone else? One more, one more. You came all this way.
How are you doing? My name's Steve Allen. I'm Nancy's husband. One other thing, that I'm not sure if she touched on this or not, but if cars did have to park in the street, I'm sure a lot of houses were built with the thought in mind that the areas in front of the houses are parking bays. So some people would probably have to park some of their cars in the street, and I don't think the streets, I don't know if the street's really wide enough to be up to spec to have parking in it. And I measured from curb to curb in the newer part of the neighborhood in between Yount Street and, and Washington Park, and that's a 26-foot-wide swath of asphalt, but it's really about 28 feet from curb to curb, if you go over the tops of the gutters. So there's room to park in certain areas there, but it's, you know, you have to be careful if a car's parked, if two people are going to pass by each other in cars, but there is enough room. But it is four feet narrower from berm to berm in Washington Park, and, you know, then that would raise other things about, you know, you know, first responders being able to get through and stuff like that. Anyway, that's all I had to say. That's all I can think of for now, anyway. Thanks.
Well, thank you very much for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So as I said, we can accept the questions. I know there's been a lot of email dialogue back and forth already, and that'll continue. I don't know if the town manager can address anything specifically, and also maybe the status of the action that the council took.
The first thing that I want to acknowledge, and I think Mr. Margado, Mr. Donsker will acknowledge as well, we are looking at a number of different alternatives, and we are not through with our evaluation. I do appreciate Ms. Gifford's comments, and much like anything, when you bring legal ADA consultants and others, there's a variety of opinions, and right now, we are really trying to fully understand what it is, because initially, there was a concern in the transition of when it moved from DG to paved, and does it really function as a path of travel? And that's really what we're focused on right now. Trust me, if we don't have to spend a hundred and some thousand on ADA curb cuts, I'm willing to look at that. We are probably going to have to do, at some point, a series of modifications, including some curb cuts because of the way there are sidewalk approaches into the neighborhood and where the narrower parts come into the other adjacent neighborhoods. We are looking at different alternatives. We're also looking at what's been called a two-on, two-off with a council policy to allow for parking that would require a demarcated true path of travel. It would partly address some of the comments that Nancy mentioned, but it would require some additional paint. We are going to have to look at doing something, and part of, one of the legal questions that we're really researching is, if we do nothing, what is the legal defense of that? A concern for me, when I look at protecting the town, is because the town was involved, the town council made a decision back in 1997 and 1998, when it changed the plans from the approval, the original approval for the Washington Park subdivision had all DG gravel in these areas, and then the town contributed funding actually to remove the first phase gravel and pave. That's a land use planning decision, and we actually, land use planning decisions are not part of our defense coverage for liability insurance. So I'm very, very concerned for a number of areas. One also is if people see it and believe it functions as a path of travel and try to move on it from other areas. We have the issue, Mr. Donsker's been very clear in his explaining a depth perception issue with the curbs, so we've got a lot of moving parts that reconcile, you know, if people are walking on this surface, whatever it is, and they're falling, and there's potential trip and fall hazard, so there's a lot of moving parts, and we are not at a point where we're absolutely adamant. We are also, we are proceeding with getting bid estimates, because this is part of a multi-part project, but if we get to the point in mid-April and this has not been reasonably resolved, we have the opportunity to delay or defer. So no action is being taken. That's the point that we'll look at. I actually spent the evening, Monday evening, with a risk manager, an attorney, and the executive director from Parsak, walking the neighborhood in the evening, where we could actually see and get a better experience for what the evening hours look like. So everybody's concerns are valid, and it's, it's something that we have to walk through. The thing I would say is, some change in the neighborhood is probably going to have to come about, even if it's as limited as what Ms. Gifford's pointed out with some signage and paint striping changing. So something will probably have to change in order for us to protect the liability, and there may be a compromise that we're still working on. So we are looking at a few different things, and hopefully, we'll be able to reach some neighborhood agreement. But I do want to point out that this particular ADA discussion is distinctly different than the depth perception issue with people falling off, whatever it is we're calling these things.
And there have been two, because that's slightly different, I'm not sure we should even get into this part, but there have been two demonstration areas created for that component.
We'll be dealing with that, and that's an attempt to show people in the neighbor what some of the options are, and there'll be a letter going out to the neighbors, and we're probably going to keep these two very distinct, because we learned from our previous experience, trying to explain a multiple range of things did not work, so we're going to try and keep it very narrow and focused. But I do appreciate, and I do want to let the neighbors know that their concern's been head, heard, councils asked us, we're really trying to understand the situation and what our best options are, and if I don't have to spend the kind of money that it's going to take to put these in, and we can do something different, then we'll look at that.
Great, thank you. And again, thank you all. We can, I think we can probably continue the conversation, I know we will, so I appreciate you bringing forward some of this information, again, in the public forum. We'll have, I'm sure, at least one, if not more, face-to-face neighborhood meetings, as well as all the emailing that's been going on, and we just wanted to make sure that we're able to keep the entire council abreast of the conversations as well. So thanks to all of you and the other neighborhood, neighbors that aren't here tonight, but this is really kind of how this process is supposed to work. I know it's new for some folks, and, and we do this pretty much all the time, but we don't want to dismiss the fact that this is the kind of input we want to hear from you, and, and it's been a very fair and, and I think respectful dialogue, which is also what we would hope from both sides. So thank you all for coming on that. Are there any other topics that the public would like to address that are not on tonight's public comment section? It's one of our longer public comments we've had in a little while, but that's, that's all right. Okay, seeing no others, we'll move on to the next part of our agenda, which is our consent calendar, and I'll either welcome a motion, or if there are any questions or concerns about any of the consent items.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The consent calendar is passed. Thank you very much. We're going to move now on to our presentations, both of which will be related to our California Veterans Home. First up, I see that we have our Allied Council report, so I think we're getting both at once, or at least an introduction. Welcome.
We're a team, so it's time to come together.
That's right.
But I have notes, and he doesn't, so he's going to go first.
Oh, I'm going to go first.
That always worries me, when that doesn't have his notes.
I always love to go first, anyway. It's always, you know, big show. Well, I think things are going well at the Veterans Home, as usual. I don't think there's any real serious problems that I'm aware of. There have been in the past, but they're pretty well under control, I think, at this point. Lots of things coming up and changes. We're working very hard on the building of a new outdoor activities that is, been approved, and we're in the process of getting contractors lined up to build it. So hopefully, this will be finished, certainly by the end of the year. The, also the project of the fish pond, which some of you may have been aware of, that exists and some of you not, but I know it was shut down when I moved in seven years ago, and it was interesting to say, wow, they used to fish here, and we will again, and that's in process also. So we are deeply in that, in the planning stage, and the getting the plans drawn up, and getting ready to go to work on that also. So that's going to be an exciting additional thing. And of course, the opening of the Lincoln Theater and the grand opening, which, there've been a couple of events already, but the grand opening on the 23rd, and hope all of, all of you, or at least most of you, will be able to be there and attend that. I know Michael Madden, the manager, has made it very, very clear that he wants to be sure that all the members of the home that want to be there are going to be there. So Marcelo, with Marcelo's help, there's been enough money put aside to make sure that that happens, so we're looking forward to that great event. There's probably many other things I could talk about. I think there's some new things that I'm, I'm looking at making happen, and really have shared a little bit of this with Marcelo, but no hard plans yet, that, one of the exciting things, I think, is I have this idea that we need a history book on the Veterans Home. And I've put, putting together a team, not just inside the home, but outside the home, looking for people that are experts or knowledgeable in that, so if you know of anybody, let me know. And we've got a number of people, we've had a couple of meetings. Marjorie has been part of this so far, and I think this is going to be exciting. My, my idea is to have not only a history book, but within it, something we've been lacking and haven't quite finished, or we've started several times, and that's a DVD of the home, and what's going on there, what it, what it's like, so that everybody could clearly see what it's like today, what it was like before, and how great a place it is. So hopefully, eventually, it would be the book with a DVD in it. That's my grand plan. And along with that also, another great idea I have is that, you know, you're familiar with Alameda as a park there, but it's really not a park. It's not used that way. There's some crosswalks, there's some very hard marble benches there that nobody wants to sit on anyway, but my grand idea there is to create some small park-like settings that would be in Alameda. This, again, is basically an idea right now, but I think, hopefully, it's come to, come to fruition. And this is going to be my last year in the Allied Council. My term is over at the end of this year, and I've served, this will be my second term as chairman, and it's been a great venture, and I'm looking forward to staying with the home and doing lots of other things, but, so I will now turn it over to Marcelo, and she can tell you about all the other wonderful things.
And actually, if I could, before we change, Ms. Rolson, we weren't able to get a report from you previously, and I don't know if you reported since you had some delegates, new delegates elected to represent you. Do you want to just touch on that?
Oh, thank you. Yes, we did, and we followed your example of saying, hey, why, why have votes, why vote when they, there isn't anybody running against them? So we were able to do that, and there were only two, basically, two sections that had to have votes, and so we have, and only one new delegate, so, and a new delegate in our section up on the hill, which is where the, generally where the married couples live, or quite a few of them do live up there. So we have a new delegate there, Linda Koch, and all the rest of the delegates are the same. So we have the same team, great team, basically, and doing lots of good things, and looking forward to do many more.
Great, thank you for that.
Anything else that you can think of, Rolson? And again, please, please feel free to get in touch with me if you've got any ideas about the book. We're going to spend months and months of gathering data, obviously, so we need everybody's help.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Founder's Day this year will be on April 4th, it's a Thursday afternoon, that'll be 129th anniversary, and what Ed is gaming for, and our goal is to have this book finished for the 130th anniversary. So next one April, the home will have been doing the same mission, caring for aged and disabled veterans for 130 years, and we think that that certainly deserves a tremendous celebration. So the history in the book will, will bring us to that, but we will be celebrating this year, kind of small, getting ready for next year's 130th. getting ready for next year's 130th. So, we are still 98% occupied. We're admitting three this week, we admitted five last week, and we have 12 more scheduled for April so far, probably add another five to six to that, so we continue to bring the members in and have a very, very strong mission. This week, as of yesterday, the licensing agency walked in, California Department of Public Health, so, and we're doing quite well. We have a great team. We have a new SNIF administrator, Monica Diaz, who's just really brought things together. We have a great chief nurse, so we're doing well with our survey, and we don't expect any problems at all with that. We also filled some other critical positions. We have a new head of plan ops, Mr. Joe Rogers, who's doing a great job. He came from the Parks Division, so he has time with the state, but he also knows how to spruce things up. I don't know if you've noticed that he's really been doing some great things and adding some color to the home, too, so we're happy with that. We have a new psychiatrist. Our prior psychiatrist retired, and we were fortunate enough to find another psychiatrist. We love Dr. Onn, but she chose to retire after 32 years, and so we picked up Dr. Patrick Nolan, so we're happy to have him. We are on budget, we're on time. It's in the state, it's real critical, because you can't go over budget, so we have a great budget shop that keeps us from, with pharmaceuticals and food and some other consumables, you can never tell how sick somebody's going to be or what they're going to need, so it's kind of a balancing act when you deal with healthcare and people and things like that, but we're doing quite well. We're getting, besides all the ballpark, even the food, you're doing the fishing pond, which we did have stock before with three, so the fishing pond, the games area, a new Socks Fifth Avenue, a new trailer. It's our freebie clothing shop for those that can't afford. We have a new trailer on the way from Modesto that was built for us, and somebody asked last time about the sidewalk to the ballpark. It kind of stops. The original plan had it just dead-ending and stop, and we have ADA compliance and the fire marshal for exit, and just, instead of it goes, instead of just ending and dead-ending, we can't put it there because it's to an exit, and it won't be ADA, and then if we turn it a little to the left, it runs into the slope. So, what we're hoping to do is have an engineer design it so that the path continues with the sidewalk and it goes in. So, we're looking at really, if you ever come out of the restrooms, you know this is a pretty sharp drop-off right there, is maybe just take out that whole drop-off and bring the sidewalk around that area and allow the exit to come out. So, we really need to do something about that pretty sharp drop-off there. So, that is on our to-do list here for this thing. So, we've had a lot of great things at the home these days. As Ed was losing to, the art show, we had a third art show. It's incredible the amount of talent that the members have in art and paintings, and we also did sculptures and other art craft things that they did. One of the ladies did a Raggedy Ann and Raggedy Andy doll in display, and it just, her stitching was absolutely precise in this doll, and you can see how, what real talent and effort people have. So, we have three of those already. We had a USO show where we had Jack Benny, and the members played the roles of many of those in the USO show in the Second World War. It was a great show. It was written by one of our soon-to-be-home members. He was here, and he and his wife left for a while, and he's coming back, so it was a homegrown production, was really excellent. We had a Valentine's Day tea, we had a masquerade ball, and this Friday we will celebrate, near and dear to my heart, Women's Veterans History Month. So, we're looking forward to that celebration, and we did take our women last week to a celebration. We actually bought them medals honoring the women veterans, so that was an honor we wanted to in Women's Veterans History Month. And that completes my report.
Great, thanks very much. Any questions? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Marcela, on the sidewalk.
Okay.
Answer from last time. I think we may have asked you this last time, and I don't remember the answer, so I'm asking again. Baseball schedules?
I can hit the button, send it to, it's all done.
Excellent.
We did get the baseball schedule, so I'll send it to Steve, and he can forward it on to you.
That would be great. Thank you.
I'd like to, as usual, I'd like to add a couple of other things that I thought about. As you know, we have our own television station, which is doing quite well and getting better all the time. We've got some really talented people working there. And we've started, we started some time ago, we had a, every other week we had a little live half-hour talk show, and now it's, we've just recently increased that to once a week, and my goal is to eventually maybe have it twice a week, whatever it takes. But, and one of the things is to get some of the people recognized by the members and our staff, so we've had staff members on our TV show, and some of our members with talent and talk about things. I like to have an open invitation to some of our town's staff and people that might be interested in being on that show. It would be nice, as far as we're concerned, to get your faces and who you are and what you do out to our members, particularly the ones that don't, aren't able to get out and see things that others do. So, if any of you are interested, I would hope you would participate. Let me know, give me a call, and we'll get you on the list and set you up for a time to be on our program. So, it would be a wonderful addition if you can do that. Oh, and also want to add, by the way, we, for our Founder's Day, we had, sent out an invitation to the governor to attend the Founder's Day, and unfortunately, I think his answer was that we haven't heard from him, so that means probably that he isn't coming. So, but, but not to give up, we'd probably follow up, would say, okay, you couldn't make the fifth, how about when can you make it? So, we're going to do that and see if we can somehow or other lasso him into coming down here sometime, and of course, you'll all know about it, and we'll share whatever event that is. So, thank you again.
Thank you. And Marcela, do you have specifics about the day's events yet for the 129th?
Yes.
Time, location for folks?
Yes. I'll send that and the baseball schedule to Steve as soon as I get back.
Okay, great. Thanks very much for both the reports. Do we, oh, we have another question. Councilmember Doran Beck?
I just wanted to make you aware that I've been working with the Women Veterans Club, and will be, they were kind enough to invite me to the luncheon on Friday, so I'll be coming early and bringing flowers and helping to decorate and celebrating with them. So, thank you for letting me know that it is such an important day.
It is. Have you seen their medals yet?
No, I'm looking forward to seeing that. That's terrific. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Also, might say, we really appreciate seeing Louis and Marjorie at our Allied Council meetings on almost a regular basis, and, you know, it might be nice to see you, the other two, and maybe even the mayor up there once in a while, show up. We welcome you, and there's coffee and donuts, you know, so.
As soon as you move those from Wednesday mornings to after our business day, it's a lot more accessible to those of us that work outside the area.
Anyway, we do appreciate your attending, whoever can, and we really appreciate that.
Great, thanks very much, and thanks for the reporting. Okay, those are our two presentations for this evening. We'll move right along. We don't have any public hearings tonight, so we can move on to our administrative regular item, which is the tabulation of the voting that was taken earlier for the Zoning and Design Review Board opening.
Yes, and just for clarification, this recruitment was to fill the unexpired term for Rob Anglin, who resigned midterm, and it's to fill that term and the upcoming three-year term, which is due to expire in July of this year. So, we'll be conducting another recruitment in about six or eight weeks or so to receive applications for the two additional positions that will expire. So, at the close of the filing period, we received two applications for this one position, one application from Kimberly Cook and one application from Adam Green, and council interviewed those individuals earlier this evening, and Kimberly Cook received nine affirmative votes, and then Adam Green received six affirmative votes. Before I ask for a motion, I did want to also say that we received one application from a Carrie Laz after the close of the filing period on Friday, so we will be keeping that application on file for the next recruitment date, and then also, whoever is not appointed for this evening will also carry that forward since those, to the next recruitment period, since those filing dates are so close together. So, with that said, if there are no other questions, I would ask that council appoint one of, Kimberly Cook to the ZDRB.
And the numbers were based on points for first and second?
Yes, that's right, that's right.
In case people were wondering how we got to nine and six with five of us up here?
Oh, sorry about that, yes, yes.
So, is there a motion to appoint Kimberly Cook to the ZDRB vacancy?
I move that we appoint Kimberly Cook to the vacancy on the Zoning and Design Review Board.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thanks both to Ms. Cook and to Mr. Green. Very much appreciate both of their willingness to step forward and apply, and as we mentioned to both of them, we welcome their return interest in, as you mentioned, on this commission, as well as we have some openings on the ALP Arts Commission.
Yes.
So, thank you very much to both of them. Staff informational reports. We have one listed for the item of parking on Pedronee and Washington Street intersection, and I think there might be another additional update, but Graham?
Sure. I've been monitoring the situation out there, and my understanding is the concern is when people are coming west on Pedronee to Washington, seeing up Washington Street to the north, as cars are coming south. I think if a large vehicle's parked there at the parking lot in front of Jessup Cellars, then there could be a visibility sight distance issue. Things have been improved with the undergrounding of the wires there, moved a pole that was there where you come around the curb return, which helps the visibility. I'm watching the parking there on the north side of Pedronee, there's plenty of room for two spaces, so I haven't seen anybody crowding in or encroaching on the ramp that's there or parking on the curb return. We are, have a project out to bid, the same one with Washington Park with the sidewalks and ramps and around town. That ramp will be replaced, so one of the options we have is to, if people are encroaching on that return, we could do some red curb there. We also have the Slurry Seal project coming up, it's going out to bid this week. It's been approved here by the town council. That would do a micro-surfacing on Washington Street, and we are re-striping Washington Street with that and shifting the center line to the west, so it'll be easier to see cars coming south on Washington as you're parked there at Pedronee. But, I've, you know, parked there or made the turn there a few times, and it's usually slow street, people coming from the stopped intersection at Washington Madison, so I haven't really seen too many issues. There's been no accidents that we're aware of, other than somebody knocking over the streetlight pole across the street, but no car accidents of people not being able to see, you know, cars coming and getting T-boned or hit from the side. So, that's sort of what I've seen so far, but I can answer any questions that you may have or concerns that have been raised.
Any specific questions from council? Councilmember Mueller?
When do you expect the Slurry Seal to be completed on Washington?
It looks like June, so it'll be before July.
Okay, good, so, before the summer season really hits, that's great. Okay, thanks.
And, Bee, do you have, yeah, normally we don't really get into questions about our informational reports, but I see that you're here, and I just wanted to invite, in case you had any questions, we would just want you to come up to the mic so everybody could hear you.
Do I have a question?
Okay, but if there's a comment?
I do have a question.
Okay, I thought maybe you might.
My name is Vidalinsky. In 2010, the council agreed, voted, whatever you do, to only allow parallel parking in front of Jessup Cellars and to mark the road so that people would know it was parallel parking. It's never been done, and after several months of complaining about it, we just gave up. I mean, that's because you can only complain so much. And I live on Pedronee. I have been to that corner several times a day, every day, and there are, sometimes I go there, and there's no problem getting out onto Washington Street, that's a fact. But there are times I go, and there's so many cars in front of Jessup Cellars, and they're so big you cannot see to get out safely. And as far as the cars coming from a stop sign at Madison Street, I can guarantee you, because I've done it and caught myself doing it, they're doing 30 and 35 miles an hour by the time they get to Pedronee. It's not a slow intersection. People think on that end of town, it's a freeway, and I'm guilty of thinking that way myself sometimes, but I try not to. I try to make sure I stop at all the stop signs and be nice in town. But, I really think, you know, there was a big bush there, they got rid of the big bush, we really appreciated that, and now, the other side of the street, they put up the no parking corners so we can see to, to the left or to the south, but if you are there on a busy day in Yountville, you cannot see to the north from Pedronee Street, the stop sign. Widening the street, I don't see what it's going to do to, or moving the line over. I don't see what help that's going to be, because where I have to stop behind the line at the stop sign, I cannot see to get out onto Washington Street.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we'll give that additional information to staff to continue evaluating that situation. Is that fair to say? Okay. Thanks, Bee, for sharing those comments, appreciate it. Is there anything more to that particular report?
In terms of shift, just to address the shift in the center line, by moving that over, cars will be further to the west, so it'll be, you'll be able to see them sooner as they're coming south. And in terms of the speed, sure, you know, it's marked for 25 miles an hour, people may not go 25, but usually, large vehicles or, you know, most vehicles don't have enough time to accelerate very quickly from a stop at Madison and Washington by the time they get to Pedronee. So, usually there's enough time, if you creep out of the intersection from Pedronee, to look to see if a car's coming south before you turn left to go south. You know, we haven't looked at how many people turn right versus turn left, but it's the people, the concern would be people turning left to go south on Washington, getting ahead of a car that's coming south on Washington. So, those are sort of some of the intersection issues that we can look at.
And we do have similar challenges in a couple other areas. Getting out of the Ranch Market parking lot, looking left and right can be challenging sometimes. A couple of the other intersections along Washington are similarly challenging. So, you know, we'll continue to have staff look at options on how best to help the visibility there. You have vice mayor comment?
A quick comment. First of all, everybody knows that Bee works for me, and she has not complained to me about it for the last two years, even though she did before. I think the concern was, and I remember when the conversation came up, is, and I think the institutional memory on that with, I'm not, I don't, I wasn't on the council when that was redeveloped, but the original, Cindy Sossman brought this up in meeting, the original development had that being teed off parallel parking, and there was the concern about whether there literally was enough space, that sometimes you see these suburban-sized vans or trucks that people use for wine tasting, that those guys pull in on the diagonal, and they literally overhang the white line there, and when you're at that intersection and you've got those guys overhanging. I think the question should be asked when we move any of these lines or look at it, is there legitimately enough space to actually call that a diagonal parking space? And I don't think it is. So, if we go back and look at that original intent of that redevelopment, that was supposed to be parallel parking.
I think there was a parallel parking, and I wasn't here, and it's been quite a while, but I also think there's been acquiescence and an understanding and a focus to try to recover parkery. But I do think, in that spirit, one of the things that we can look like, look at is also on both ends, and I tend to agree with the public works director, moving the lane out is going to have an effect, and it will, one of the things that we could probably do that would have the best effect is, right now it's informal, there's no tees one way or the other for parallel. If we were to look at actually striping it and then making the spaces the closest to the intersection compact, then I think we might actually start having a much more significant, because then we can actually ticket. People may not realize it, but if you drive a large suburban and you park it in a marked compact spot and you don't fit in it, you actually, that's a ticketable offense. So, I'm just thinking off the top of my head, and it's something Bob Graham and I can go play with, but that actually might have, along with looking at where the stop sign actually is. The other interesting thing, for those that are familiar, the stop sign's back a little bit, and then it has the walkway, and then you have the bulb, you know, the bulb out. So, what Ms. Delinski's commenting about is when you stop before the crosswalk, you actually are quite a ways from Washington. So, I think we'll take a look at all these various things and see if we can do something that can improve the situation.
Thank you. I remember being on the ZDRB when Jessup Cellars was built, and because they had a parking lot in the back, the need for, the number of spaces in the front wasn't felt to be as critical, and also cars were not quite as gigantic as they had become. So, there are a couple of those issues that have changed.
In a related vein, we are trying to work with them to encourage them to put a parking directional sign, because the Jessup parking lot is the worst-used parking lot in all of town, and so that's something Bob and Sandra and I have been...
Then the challenge is the A-frame sign that gets put in the street.
No, this actually, are modified when you guys made some, I was going to use the word liberalization of the sign ordinance, I don't know if that's an appropriate word. One of the things that staff has recognized is appropriate directional signs to route people to parking is helpful. Otherwise... Otherwise, they go do what they do. And this is one of those areas where we, you know, we need the applicant to come forward and put a parking, you know, sign in with an arrow so that people that are going to Jessup know that there's a rear parking lot. So, that would be helpful, but again, we'll look at a smorgasbord. We also will see how it potentially ties in the development of the site. For those of you that may not be aware, is we have received a, I'll say at this point, incomplete application, but a very preliminary application from the property owner of Stewart, so we do anticipate that there may be some activity there, and it may be an opportunity for us to look at how to better amalgamate that section of the neighborhood.
Great. Thanks very much. Any other informational reports?
I do want to mention that we've been trying, trying to get a media release from PG&E, but PG&E will be beginning some work on the gas pipeline. The pipeline on the east side of Washington Street from the south end of town to about Humboldt and Jefferson is, was built in 1930, and last year had three leaks. So PG&E has, as part of their whole program of improving gas line safety, they've done the hydrotesting across the highway. They'll be actually replacing that pipeline over the next year or two. They'll be doing a directional drill of a pipeline from Land Lane at the south end of town all the way up to Oak Circle. It's not going to be directionally drilled the whole direction. They have to have places where they have potential conflicts with water, sewer, other utilities, so there will be about eight holes in the street as they move to the north end. And then they need to connect all, there's several businesses that are connected to the transmission line instead of a distribution line, which is right next to it. So it's just old connections that they're going to switch over to the new pipeline. And the next year, they want to come back from Oak Circle up to Humboldt and then replace that pipeline. So what this, one, give people a heads up that there'll be traffic control and contractors out working. The other thing is that we'll be safer, but we're trying to get the word out with media release. They've gone into each of the businesses that will be affected, talked to them, so just want people to be aware that that's, that's happening and that, you know, be cautious of, you know, what's, you know, the workers and the traffic control. We also have some work starting on some sewer manholes down at Gateway near Hotel Yountville, and also one in front of Bouchon, but that media release has gone out, but just want to give people a reminder that those projects are moving ahead. And then last point on the slurry seal, because PG&E is doing the work between Oak Circle and Humboldt, the plans that the council approved, we're probably going to come back and ask that to be a bid alternate, because we don't, because PG probably is going to have to come back next year and do more, either directional drilling or trenching between those streets, so putting that as an add alternate in the bid, so that if PG&E, or PG probably won't be able to finish their work in time, it doesn't make sense to slowly seal a street and then have them dig it up. So we'll probably ask the council to delay that portion of the work until a future slurry seal project in a couple of years. So just want to give you a heads up that it's good that PG&E's moving forward, but it has caused some changes in our plan to do a slurry seal on Washington Street.
But the main pipeline work is not imminent.
The part between Land Lane and Oak Circle is, that'll start next week. The part between Oak Circle and Humboldt will probably be next year. So that's why we want, wanted to lay that section of slurry seal work.
And any update on the power lines coming down in front of the Heston Project in Vandeler Park?
Sure. The contractors put the trenching between Heston, there's a new vault there in front of the Gates Estates, up to Weber. They still need to make the connection from the, from that vault to the property. They're waiting for AT&amp;T to come in and set some poles, and then they can make the connections to the pole. But then we're waiting for AT&amp;T to, you know, take the wires off the existing poles and put them into the conduits. Same thing with Comcast. So I don't have a schedule from AT&amp;T. I've been trying to communicate with them and get their schedule, but usually, they take, you know, several months to get their work completed. But as I know more, I can share more information with the council as that project moves forward. So the contractor hired by Heston has pretty much done their work. We're just waiting for the utility companies.
Try to get them to commit to a two-hour window.
Yeah.
All right, thanks. Any other staff reports? Council meeting reports. I'll quickly go through, the Napa County Flood Control and Water Conservation District did meet today. Chair Jill Tekel, Napa's mayor, and Supervisor Bill Dodd, and two staff members went back to Washington DC to request funding from the Army Corps of Engineers, among others. They said that it's the most positive climate that they have seen, but not to get too excited, because as Supervisor Dodd listed, some of the other issues that have presented themselves prior to going to Washington, it involved going to war twice, the worst depression or recession in, you know, a couple generations, natural disasters that have caused flooding like Katrina. So, those were things that have happened prior to trips to Washington in the years past. So none of those significant issues have happened, but there's still no money available that's at least obvious in, in Washington, so to be continued on the funding for, for that. The other thing that was of interest, especially, I think, to us here in Yountville, the North Bay Aqueduct, which we sold our water rights to a number of years ago, which I think continues to look like a smarter and smarter decision. We were paying, at the time, a quarter of a million dollars for an insurance policy of water that we never got. It was meant to receive in drought situations, and if a drought ever hit, the percentage of water we would be getting was so low that it didn't make any sense for us to continue paying this kind of water insurance policy, so we, we sold those rights to the city of Napa, I believe. Well, we found out today that the one lone pipeline that goes, basically connects the valley to the aqueduct is aging, at least 40 years old, and there's a section of that pipe that was built with inferior material, that they've determined, that is causing the flow rate to be reduced so that it doesn't, you know, blow up that part of the pipeline. So, it's not even able to flow at capacity, so those that are holding on to those water rights are guaranteed not to get as much as they're paying for, and they're going to be looking, and the Department of Water Resources doesn't have any capital project program like we do, where they've set aside materials or money to pay for their pipeline maintenance or replacement. So, that's just a bit of an update on why we're glad that we're not involved with North Bay Aqueduct any further. There was also an update. They handed out these flyers that were given to the legislators in Army Corps about the flood project, and it was praised by virtually everyone, who then followed up by saying, "It's the best project we see, but we can't guarantee any funding." So, if there's any funding at all, it sounds like the Napa project is high on the list, but we'll see how that goes. Upper Valley Waste Management Authority?
Yes, we met yesterday, and we've got quite a few things going on. First, Earth Day is next month, is, is going to be celebrated, it's actually the 22nd, but all the celebrations are going to occur on Saturday, April the 20th. The first one, and probably the largest event, will be in downtown Napa at Veterans Park from 11 to 5. It's going to be over 100 exhibits of green products and services, and they will have valet bicycle parking. So, I thought that was a clever idea. Calistoga's having Earth Day events on the same day from 11 to 3 at their Pioneer Park, and they will also have an e-waste event that same day from 9 to 11. It's going to be at their community pool in Longview Park. But if you don't want to drive that far, St. Helena is going to also have an e-waste from, on April 20th, from 9 to noon. In addition to the e-rate, e-waste collection, they're, they're going to have a, if you have a lot of big boxes of paper shredding you never got around to, that's the place to go. They'll do it for free up there. Also, we have handed out or prepared handouts for the, the free home composting workshop. There's a whole series of those from, that go on from March through September, and Michelle has a big pile, so if anybody's interested in signing up, it is free, but you still have to sign up. You can see our Michelle or the pile we have here at Town Hall. Here's another one for your pile. Also, I think people know that there's been a state law passed that any, that if paint is sold, that now companies have to collect the old paint because it's a hazardous waste. So, there's been a contract signed with Paint Care, who will now be doing that. And that's significant, because about a third of the money we spend on our household hazardous waste collections go, because, goes towards collecting the paint. So now, Paint Care will be picking those up, so we'll save lots of money. Also, a lot of paint is collected at the Yountville Corporation Yard, so Paint Care will now be picking that up, and we won't have to pay to drive it down to probably Devlin Road Transfer Station. Yountville Cleanup Day, that is coming Saturday, May the 18th, and the company, Upper Valley Waste Management, will be sending each customer of theirs in Yountville, a display sign that they can put on, you can put out, they'll be giving instructions, there'll be lots of advertising on your pile. That way, they can figure out who the customers are, and you need to be a customer, and this is all because of Prop 26. We get the money from the company to hold this event, and with Prop 26, we used to give away all of our ratepayer funds for other events, and we're free, and we're now no longer allowed to do that. So if a ratepayer pays the money, the money has to be used by the ratepayer. So, look forward to seeing those. It's kind of early on. We'll talk about that a little, as more as we get closer. And there are ongoing discussions that the county is having regarding possible ordinance on banning plastic bags, and we might hear about that. Part of the discussion was that the city of Napa does not want to be part of a county-designated ordinance and may want to put something together on their own. So, that's what we did yesterday.
Thank you. Any other board or commission reports?
I have a question.
Yes.
So, with regards to Town Cleanup Day, I think historically, we've done something the week before on town yard sales. Is that still on the plans? And I hate to steal anyone's thunder.
Yes, that is, and that's actually a, just a good reminder, Councilmember Mueller is focused on the Cleanup Day part, but in our, we market and promote the week prior a community yard sale, and that will continue to go, so that'll be May 11th. And, you know, if people have the option of cleaning up their yard or putting all the stuff they didn't get rid of, so those two go in, you know, sort of hand and gloves, so to speak, but yes.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Well, you brought up on the last item, the plastic bag ban, and I keep reading the paper about groups saying that the main reason we need to ban plastic bags is that you cannot put them in recycling. And the, the literature we get, and I pulled it up because I wanted to make sure I was right, says that we can put plastic bands in our bags...
Yes, you can, right.
...in single-stream recycling.
Correct. That is correct. Our, in Yountville and the whole JPA we're in, our recycling contract, yes, they, they do allow that.
Well, I, I guess my concern is, is now I think everybody thinks that they shouldn't recycle them, because all I read in the paper is you can't recycle them. So I wonder if, maybe they can make a point? I mean, I don't know if you can bring that up to make a point of bringing that up.
No, I'll certainly bring that up. They, they send out a newsletter routinely with their bills, and we'll just bring that to everyone's attention, much like we did with the Sharps.
Right.
We've had very good progress on that, and there's some new grants coming out that we're going to be able to take advantage of, so I will bring that up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or meeting reports? Are there, not, not really, but, no, not really, but if, feel free to talk to staff after, and if there's an issue that we need to address, we can, we can do it there. Thanks. Yeah. I'm sure she'll talk to you outside if, if the timing works out also. But now, I'm saving one, one fairly significant report for the end here, but are there other comments that people would like to share, council? I do want to just acknowledge a couple of events that just occurred, well, one that just occurred and one that's about to. The Yountville Elementary School Red and White Gala was, I think, a tremendous success, very good support from the community, both parents and non-parents. And Jean Charro Boise and his wife Gina Gallo were the honorary chairs, and it was really nice that they were there and brought their support. I think they raised a substantial amount of money. I haven't seen a dollar number yet, but there's also part two of the Red and White coming up April 6th, I believe.
That's correct. That's right.
Which is at Silverado Vineyards, and it's going to be a, more of a friendly price point, or this is really more of a...
$25 per person.
Big fundraiser, that one, 25 a person?
Yep.
Silent auction with food and wine. So, that's also coming up. I did want to mention, and Veterans Home Allied Council Chair Olson mentioned this earlier, the Napa Valley Performing Arts Center at Lincoln Theater. While it has already opened, and they just had a tremendous, from all accounts, foot loose sequence of shows from Justin Sienna High, that was very well received just about a week ago. The grand opening event is this Saturday. There are tickets still available. They have three different levels of tickets, and you have three different levels of wonderful food and wine experiences, and then everybody's going to go into the Performing Arts Center and see some really fantastic, primarily local performers, but also a couple bigger-name folks that are going to come in. So those are some upcoming events. Also, I wanted, just a reminder, and I, our town clerk was nice enough to give me the visual aid, or staff did. The Yountville Arts Commission is looking for new membership. We have some existing arts committee members that have applied, but we're looking forward to some more folks. Feel free to stop by here at Town Hall or...
Five Positions.
Five Positions, and we'll be interviewing over the next coming weeks as applications come in. That's available on our website as well as coming in here, and I believe we all have been given some brochures to pass out or have on hand as well. With that, I'm going to move on to another item that I'd like to present to the council. It's about an opportunity that's just presented itself, a rather unique one for the town as well as for me, is a, a business development trip to Beijing, China. And so, what you were given on the dais is a document that has been presented, and I asked Craig Camp of Cornerstone Cellars to be with us tonight, because it's in conjunction with a, a business project that he's been working on for a number of years, with the Chinese Ministry of Commerce, as well as business development leaders in Beijing. They have requested my attendance at a signing ceremony, as well as meeting their executives of this business development center. What they're doing is, and I will invite Craig up here, because I think he could speak better to it, he's been involved in the discussions in great detail, but the Ministry of Commerce through this China International Brand Management Center is creating what they can call kind of distribution centers that can be protected for their authenticity. There is a significant counterfeit import-export problem in China, and they're recognizing that, and this program is meant to establish basically secure sites around the world, including the United States, including the state of California, where they can have assurances that the products that are being imported from the US are in fact what they think they're getting. The governor, Jerry Brown, is going to Beijing for two weeks in mid-April on a trade and investor mission. This is an extension of that effort. This is a component of his broader outreach that involves specifically the wine industry. And what we're talking about is, is the town of Yountville would be designated as the distribution center for wines from not only the Napa Valley, but I think an extension into the state of California, as the distribution center for wines imported into China. They're creating up to 100 of these distribution centers, they're calling commodity malls, and they will be protected, is maybe not the right word, but protected, regulated by the government, the People's Republic of China government and the Ministry of Commerce, so that people that are buying goods through these commodity malls have more assurance and a guarantee that they're actually getting what the product says it is. So I, I put before you the document that they have asked, kind of a cooperative, they call it a, a statement of cooperation between the Ministry of Commerce, the Association of International Trade, and the town of Yountville. And what I wanted to do is bring this forward to you tonight, not for any specific action, but with the understanding that I would request more formal action by our April 2nd meeting if you all agree that... if you all agree that I could go and represent the town in this business development venture. And then the second part to that is, what I'm hoping happens is that all of my expenses are covered through the businesses and the Chinese government. But there may be some limits to what they can legally pay for me, just like we run into with all of our restrictions on gifts and travel expenses. So, we're still trying to iron out exactly how much money it might cost for me to be there from the week of, the week of April 8 through the 13th. But once we have those specific numbers, we would come back and request that there might be a not-to-exceed expense amount that the council consider to cover the cost of that trip. So, I would invite, Craig, if you can come up and either correct or fill in any gaps now, and then I'll invite the council to ask either of us any questions.
Okay, well, just a little background on how all this happened. In 2008, for some reason, we were inspired to seek exports for sales, and we began working very hard on China at that time. That led to a relationship with CITIC Bank, which is one of the largest banks in China, and as many things as China, has a very close association with the government. Over the last two years, we've had five groups of executives come to Yountville. We've been fortunate, several times the mayor has been there to receive them. Cindy at the chamber has been there several times to make presentations, and Yountville has had a very strong and positive effect on these Chinese executives. This led to the meeting with the Ministry of Commerce and the development of this program. So, Yountville is very much at the heart of it. We're hoping to extend and build tourism, which we think is good for Yountville and, of course, good for Cornerstone, because once we get people here, as we've proved from the CITIC executives, they become fans of Yountville and, of course, the wines from the area. So, it's complicated. We're working with multiple government units. Negotiating vineyard contracts hasn't done much for me in this regard, but it's moving forward very quickly. China is, like most places, of course, relationships are everything. This has led us down this path to where we're at now. And we're, I think it's a great opportunity, and we hope to bring many people to Yountville from it. These will be Yountville centers, by the way. Yountville will be highly featured as a center in the mind of the Chinese when they see these products.
And just to clarify also, this is basically a virtual development or distribution center here, where it's actually brick-and-mortar commodity malls, where, as Craig was mentioning, there would be a display, not unlike a wine tasting room display that you would see here that would showcase Yountville in the Napa Valley, but at our end, we're not talking about having any kind of big distribution warehouse. It's more about pass-through via the internet and electronic sales and ordering and that type of thing. So it'd be virtual from our perspective.
The reason to establish an office in Yountville is that they will be sending groups from each of these centers of high-level buyers, media people, and consultants to Yountville to meet with us directly here and see what the Napa Valley is all about. So, our function here, besides providing and facilitating contacts with other wineries, and as the mayor mentioned, the shipments will go from the winery warehouses to warehouses in the Bay Area for shipment to China. But here will be a publicity center and a marketing center.
And the, just to try to explain a little bit more of why would I be involved in this, based partly on my experiences of having not only with Craig and Cornerstone, but some other businesses, when Chinese governmental officials and business leaders travel, they very much merge the two. They want to meet the local elected officials and meet the local business people and create those relationships before they start to really truly do business. And that's their style, that's the culture of the business community there.
Right. It's a very formalized, they like ceremonies, and this is very much part of that process. Also, I think that the line isn't always so clear in China between the government unit and the business unit, so.
So, I've been, not only asking folks like Supervisor Dodd, who's done, matter of fact, he just recently did international travel, and the value there, we're looking at certainly a significant upside in tourism. We talk about where is that future revenue source coming from? I think this might be one of those opportunities. And going there and representing Yountville specifically has some real value at their end. But it is, it's complex, especially as I would get involved because of the different layers of what our FPPC calls a business development group versus a governmental agency, and what the Chinese government and the Chinese business community consider are, you know, together or independent, they don't line up exactly. So, the concern is, if I go and I'm given the authorization to represent the town, I'd be very careful about what I'm allowing others to pay for, basically, in terms of airfare, hotel expenses. So, that's what we still haven't figured out. If there's a way for me to be a part of the official travel party with the governor, that would certainly alleviate a lot of the concern, but there's still some question about that. And just also, to protect our interest and frankly, my personal interest, if I have to travel, what exposure I have. So, we may have this not-to-exceed authorization that I would be requesting, and we would also bring forward all the other opportunities there are to have the businesses involved in this actually pay for the allowable gift limit, so.
The ministry has now made an official request to the governor's office.
But the dates move faster than the process does.
That is correct.
Mr. Mayor, if there's interest in the council, the action that we would need to be taking on April 2 would include three distinct elements. There'd be one resolution, but the first element would be authorization for you to participate on behalf of the town as a delegate to the trade mission, and I'll work on getting the exact language and some of that. The second would be an amount not-to-exceed travel, and those two actions are required by the town council protocols. The third action that would need council action and approval would be authorization for the mayor to execute and enter into the actual memorandum of understanding. So, those are the things that if you provide consensus direction, that's what will be coming back to you on April 2.
And I have given this document both to town manager and town attorney to review. There hasn't been any concern brought up. It's a fairly, I don't know if you've had time to read it, but it's a fairly generic, "We will support each other in developing business opportunities in the future," is kind of what it says, so. But questions, Vice Mayor?
Well, I was going to make the request that, when that's discussed on April 2, if, as soon as we can, get some guidelines from our legal team on this, because it's not precedent in my time, is the way I would say it. I have no experience in this.
I don't either.
That's three of us.
That's why, one of the main reasons I'm hoping that we can formalize the relationship with the governor's trade mission is that clarifies quite a bit, and in terms of who's responsible for what, primarily. And frankly, it would give a lot of credibility to this particular portion. The governor's effort is over a broad scope of industries throughout the state. An example, I think, would be the agricultural industry in central California is going to have some kind of representation. This is a component that would represent the wine industry. There are other trade associations that would be represented in similar but different ways.
Right. They're establishing a new trade office in Shanghai. That's one of the things he's doing in general.
So, additional questions?
Another question. Yeah, I think this memorandum of understanding, I just, I read it quickly, it's surprisingly generic for, did this come from the?
Came from the international-
Ministry of Commerce in China?
Came from the international, the China Association of International Trade, which is, what was the language they used, an extension?
It was formed by the Ministry of Commerce for this purpose.
On their behalf?
It's a board, yes. Formed by the Ministry of Commerce. It is very formal. I think they, again, it's a more ceremonial thing. They like the feeling that they're going to, announcing formally that their guests that they send to Yountville will be officially welcomed. I think that's what a lot of that is.
I didn't give you, so I just, I didn't give you the Mandarin version?
That's quite, I mean, I've seen lots of these in other business dealings. I'm just very taken aback by the very general nature and just the open-ended, there's no discussion of definitions here. So, this document makes me very nervous. Another question is that we're agreeing to set up a global purchasing center office in Yountville. What does that mean?
And, go ahead.
Well, that would be our office. That's what we're commissioned with creating. Our agreement is very specific on that, that we have a facility to host and have meetings with these guests, which had something to do with my last appearance here at the council.
That's the virtual distribution center or business that I was referring to earlier that, it's calling it a center, but it's not a physical structure.
This, of course, this is a translation, and that's how they refer to these. They call all these various things centers, and they mean offices.
Well, I guess, I mean, we'll let our legal team kind of-
Right.
...sort through signing agreements with major country like that, and we'll see what they come back with.
And frankly, the genericness and the vagueness makes me more comfortable because we're not committing to anything really concrete. It's very ceremonial and symbolic, but it's also encouraging that opening of that travel portal and business development portal, so.
Yeah, this is, it's essentially identical to the agreement they did with the state of Illinois, which I saw a copy of.
Is this, or how is this related to the efforts that Napa Valley vintners have gone through to have outreach and coordination with the Chinese and promoting California and Napa Valley wines? I mean, is this related at all? It doesn't seem like it is.
It is not. It's a very, we have, from the beginning, taken, I think, a different approach to the Chinese market. Instead of seeking a traditional distribution model, we were, tried to learn how they marketed products and moved them within their market. And this led to our association with CITIC Bank, which I mentioned before. For instance, we've been selling, the wine we've been selling in China, we sell directly to the bank, who then sells it and offers it to their clients directly. So, there's not the kind of traditional distribution system we think of in the United States. And that's actually, I think, one of the reasons they wish to do this, so that if they set up these centers, hotel buyers can come in and know that this is an authentic product that has the approval of the government, and buy a dependable, honest item. It's many items, it's not just wine, obviously, it's many things they're doing.
And to follow up on that, I actually did have, I reached out to Rex Stoltz, the Industry Relations Manager of the Vintners Association, and asked him that they're actually going to Beijing the week after this trip is happening. They're going through the U.S. Ambassador's Office and bringing vintners, and it's a much more traditional way. They've gone to Beijing and Shanghai, they just went last year, where they bring vintners and they present wines in more of a reception setting to, I think, kind of showcase the labels. He was comfortable with the idea. He thought I had to just make sure that we're careful about what we're getting ourselves into, because it is very complex, and it's a different system of relationship in China than it is here. And so, he just mentioned to be a bit wary of that and any overcommitment of anything based, you know, by the town or frankly, from the business component. But generally speaking, they're supportive because they've been receiving positive feedback from the outreach they've been doing in China about label protection principally. That's part of the issue. In the past, going through the typical channels of distribution, there hasn't been any certification or assurance that wines that leave the Napa Valley, when they get into China, they aren't, the labels aren't changed, or the wine is poured into, something else is poured into those bottles. And so, this is the Ministry of Commerce and the government's acknowledgement that they have to clean up the business end of it in China.
There was a recent ruling regarding-
Right.
-the Appalachian label.
One of the main aspects of this is the center then will handle the importation centrally for all of these clients. So they will bring everything in themselves, handle the payments, instead of having, you know, dozens of distributors scattered throughout China.
Sounds lucrative.
With any luck?
I don't know necessarily that the town wants to get into a resolution where it's going to provide economic benefit to an individual interest per se. I don't know. I mean, I'm just saying hypothetically, if it was our responsibility to promote a different business in this community as a representative of China, and we're putting our government official as the rubber stamp that that's okay, I mean, I don't know how our constituents might take that or our other businesses.
Which is why we wanted to bring this to the council for discussion, absolutely.
It's been our position from the beginning, this entire project, is one of our major goals is to bring people to Yountville. This is a one-of-a-kind place, it's a unique advantage for us, and every person that's visited here from China has been just totally taken by it. We're in the process of helping CITIC Bank open a wine bar in their general headquarters. And one of the major aspects of it that they want to do is recreate and promote Yountville as a place for tourism. So, this is our goal. My advantage in that, of course, everybody has advantages, that Yountville is such a unique place that I know that if I get people here, they're going to be a lifelong customer.
I think we're straying a little bit from, this is council member comments-
Oh, okay.
And I'm afraid that you're starting to talk more about the item which will be more appropriate for your April 2.
That's fine. Okay.
That's fine.
So, the real action that we just need is a consensus direction from the council to bring this item back, and then you will take formal action on April 2.
Okay.
Could I please ask one question, though? Everyone else had the opportunity.
As long as, as long as our attorney believes that it's appropriate, so. Go ahead and ask it, and if we can't answer it, we won't.
I just wanted to know, is the same bank involved in this particular?
No, they made the introductions to the Ministry of Commerce.
Thank you. That's all I wanted to know.
Yes.
And with that, the direction of the council, the legal team will look at the whole structure and make sure that we're all comfortable that this is appropriate.
I agree. So, is there a direction to move forward with the discussion to our April 2 meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, it's an unconventional item, so we'll just have to figure it out as we go here. Any other less complicated council comments? No? With that, my screen has gone dark. Future agenda items, we see them listed there, appointment to the Association of Bay Area Governments, and updating and reviewing our master fee schedule. Do we have any need for a closed session?
No.
No? I just want to double-check, in case something came up, we couldn't deal with it anyway because it's not agendized.
We've got a supplemental agenda on that, if there was.
Right. With that, it looks like we're to our adjournment, to our Tuesday, April 2 at 6:00 P.M. meeting. Is there a motion?
Move to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you, and good night.
You made fun of me.
At 7:30.